Okay, our webinar is live, YouTube is live and North Penn Television is live. Mr. Casa, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Gelmer. We'll call to order this month's meeting, the November 2021 Facilities and Operations Committee Meeting. We will start as always with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll move on to next item on the agenda, and that's approval of the minutes from the October 25th, 2021 Facilities and Operations Committee Meeting. Do we have a motion? All right, it's moved and seconded. And are there any questions or comments about last month's minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand or say aye to approve the minutes. Aye. It's unanimous, the minutes are approved. Move on now to items recommended for work session and our action meeting. Mr. Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have a number of items for recommendation to action meeting. The first of which are some change orders for NAP Elementary School. We have three change orders this evening. One to Lowbar, one who was a general contractor, one to the Myco Mechanical, and one to Myco Mechanical for Plumbing. Mr. Slaughter, want to go over the first, these three change orders, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me again as usual. The first change order is to the general contractor. It is a series of four change order requests, two add change orders and two deduct change orders. The first is to upgrade the existing flagpole. The flagpole that was originally specified was an external lanyard with a thin wall, thin wall design. After the tornado went through and did so much destruction, we went through and looked it over and decided that we should add a thicker walled flagpole with an internal lanyard so that the rope did not get as much weathering and does not bang as much. The second is for credit to the owner to provide a thinset quarry tile. The kitchen area in NAP Elementary School was originally designed to have a thick wet bed. That was not necessary. We opted to go to a thinset quarry tile subbase instead. That resulted in a credit to the owner of $3,531 and change. Change order number 47 was there were four new windows installed in the administrative area. Then those windows failed to provide castrated sills to match the rest of the project. That was an omission by the architect. That was an add of $1,831. And then during the design, we were able to work with the roofing manufacturer and reduce the amount of wood blocking in the roof section of the new addition and several other areas, including the gymnasium. That resulted in a $4,000 deduct change order. The total for the change order for general contract is a deduct of $3,054.69 to the owner. Are there any questions with that change order?
Doesn't look like we have any questions.
All right, Mr. Linsky, would you like to bring up the next change order? This change order is to Myco Mechanical. This is in their mechanical contract. This change order is a add change order of $2,959.05. Since we moved phasing around in a lot of locations, in order to turn over areas early, we had to kind of go out of sequence. So we were required to refeed heating lines that were originally set up in phase four to earlier phases. So this required a building shutdown, additional valves, and heating lines fed from the opposite direction. But this resulted in additional classrooms being available to the school to use at an earlier timeframe. This work was directed by ICS and with owner approval. So this add change order is going to be billed against the cost allowance number two in the contract. So this will be a $0 change order for the mechanical contract. Any questions with this change order?
Ms. Wesley.
Hi, just a quick question. Because this was the result of reorganizing the phases and then when, then the phase where this was supposed to happen, would there then be a a credit? I recognize this is a zero cost change order, but will there be any credits coming back because of it?
So that has worked into this cost amount. So that this was originally to be fed from phase four, which ended up being the last phase of this project. So unfortunately, most of this cost is in the shutdown that had to occur to install the additional valves to refeed this from the opposite direction.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Mr. Linsky, would you please move to the next change order? This change order is to the plumbing contract, and this is in phase five. We had talked about this several months ago. There was a roof drain. It was in conflict with one of the rooftop units. And this roof drain was also tied to a secondary roof drain in the corridor. So we decided to reroute the rainwater connections into the classroom to provide more space in the corridor. And while we were doing this, we added this into a larger drain line further down the hallway. We felt this would allow for better water flow in the stormwater, and we were concerned about the possibility of a restriction in the original location. So this also was based upon adding roof crickets for better roof drainage based on the ERUs being installed. So this change order represents $6,789.13, but this will be a $0 change order against unit cost allowance 8B. That cost allowance has a line item amount of $9,900 and will not be used in phase four for the remaining underground work. Are there any questions on this?
Just a quick question. It's categorized as an unforeseen condition as opposed to an improvement in the design?
So it kind of falls under all three items, Director Wesley. There was a little bit of a conflict with the location of the rooftop unit and the existing roof drain. There was also the roof work, or I'm sorry, the piping work for the additional two roof drains was not as shown on the drawings. And then there was an improvement to the project by us rerouting this and adding it into a larger stormwater line. So I use one terminology for it, but it was actually a combination of all three.
Okay, thanks. I just don't like unforeseen conditions because it just doesn't, when you describe it, it doesn't feel like a completely unforeseen conditions. But now that verbal explanation helps me. Thanks.
Not a problem. That's all I have for the three change orders for NAP Elementary School unless there's any other questions.
Mr. Linsky, could you bring up the change order request, report? So the updated change order report for NAP Elementary School, if you can scroll up a little bit, scroll down. Lowbar's change order percentage without considering allowances, 0.52%. And Myco Mechanical's plumbing is 2.01%. And moving down further, scroll down a little bit more. The mechanical contract is 0.26%, Cedar Electric, 0.86. So we have a total percentage change orders without the allowances of 0.83% on the overall contract. When considering the $0 change orders where we utilize the allowances into this, we have a total of a 2.28% change order over the entire contract amount to date. So we're below the contingency amount. We have a remaining contingency amount in the project of $1.177 million. So almost $1,178 is remaining in the contingency. So that's the quick update from the NAP Elementary School change order report.
Ms. Wesley.
Yeah, Mr. Schneider, just one question. That, all that sounds really encouraging. In terms of percent completion of the project in relationship to contingency dollars available, where are we with that?
We're apparently in the range of about 65% complete in the project. Would you agree with that, Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, I would agree. Once we turn over phase three, that percentage will jump up probably to 80 to 85%. But yeah, we're very close to that. Yes.
I think, yeah, I think this is great in terms of all of the challenges with the supply chain and such, and we are where we are at this contingency. So thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on the list is for the board to consider a contract for the hazardous material survey of the North Penn High School and the bus garage. This is in connection with the North Penn High School master planning process. This is an item which the Schrader Group would be required to have to develop the master planning process.
Mr. Schneider, should we vote on the NAP Elementary change orders?
I'm very sorry, Mr. Casa. Yes, I'm sorry about that.
No, it's the first time I caught that in, you know, the last 10 months. So you're usually catching me. Thank you. For the NAP Elementary change orders that were just reviewed, do we have a motion? We have a second to move this forward. All right, so any comments or questions about the NAP Elementary change orders moving to action for the full board consideration? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand or say aye. Unanimous, and that will move to the board for full consideration at action meeting. Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Apologize for that, Mr. Casa. As I was saying, the hazardous material survey will, is contracted with Criterion, who was the responsible professional at NAP Elementary School. They will be performing the survey for asbestos, lead, PCB sampling, and any universal waste inspection of the North Penn High School and the bus garage. We have two separate contracts to consider. The first for the high school is in the amount of $16,915, and the second is in the amount of $3,920 for the bus garage. And as I mentioned, this is for the North Penn High School master plan process. Schrader Group would need this information to complete that master planning process.
Mr. Schneider, is radon testing part of this? Is that something that is ongoing typically? Where are we at?
No, radon is not part of this at this point. Mr. Linsky and I have discussed the potential of doing some radon testing district wide. There is no requirement. Mr. Linsky, do you want to give a little bit of an update on requirements of radon?
Sure, Mr. Schneider. So currently, radon testing is not a requirement for school districts. It's recommended. So that's something like Mr. Schneider had said we're looking into doing. With new construction, you know, to test now, we wouldn't really do that in the high school, but we could look at, you know, doing that at a later date. Or other things you can do is to incorporate radon, you know, resistant type ventilation. So that's something that we can certainly discuss.
Is this something that would be appropriate for a topic in January's session the committee would be interested in? Or is, does that answer suffice? Any comments from the committee?
I'm of the opinion, but I'll defer to other committee members, that, you know, this high school project is something that we should receive an update about on a monthly basis at this point. It's fairly dynamic, not completely yet, but it's moving, and I personally like to see it on the agenda every time we meet.
Thank you, Ms. Wesley. So we'll make sure that that becomes something going forward, Mr. Schneider, for the agenda. I'll defer to you and your team about radon and when to put that on the agenda to make us more aware of what you think the best options are moving forward. Is that clear?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the hazardous materials survey? And before we ask for a motion to vote that forward? All right, seeing no hands. Do we have a motion to move this forward for a full consideration by the board?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye. It's unanimous, hazardous materials survey will move forward. Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. The next item is permission to advertise for a traffic study in connection with the master planning process of the North Penn High School. It is, this is, you can pull that down. We're not, that item, Mr. Linsky, that's the walk-in box. We don't have an item for the permission advertised for the traffic. The traffic study is necessary to better understand the impacts of traffic on the North Penn High School site with future, the potential of future renovations and additions. So we're requesting that we add a permission to advertise for that RFP so that we can engage a traffic study.
All right, any questions or comments from the committee? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor of the traffic study being moved to the action meeting for full board consideration, raise your hands or say aye. The motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Next item.
The final item that we're recommending for consideration by the full board is a design contract with the Schrader Architectural Group to design an exterior walk-in box freezer here at the Support Services Building. Couple months ago, Ms. Frolich from the School Nutrition Services discussed the potential of adding a walk-in box freezer someplace in the district. And the recommendation was made to have it here at the Support Services Center. This freezer would help School Nutrition Services to better store and order products. And the other item to consider is that through the master planning process at the high school, we do have a large exterior freezer at the high school, and that may be impacted in the future. So having extra storage space for full, School Nutrition Services for frozen food would be important in the school district. So this contract to design the, the walk-in box is for $9,980. And it is anticipated that we would be out to bid as soon as the project would be awarded. It will be a quick turnaround on the design because the walk-in boxes have such a long lead item where Schrader is committed to turning the design around quickly.
Mr. Schneider, how does this new walk-in freezer compare to the current one at the high school, size-wise?
It would be smaller, and the reason why, we're constrained here a little bit at the Support Services Center. We would be having this installed underneath a canopy, which typically houses vehicles, you know, to keep them out of weather. But it would be smaller than what we have at the high school, but we would be building, most probably, building additional freezer space at the high school. So if we would lose that one, we would probably have about the same capacity.
Ms. Wesley.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Casa. So, Mr. Schneider, regarding this, its location, will this be looked at in terms of any other work in the future on the footprint of where this refrigeration will be? Because I know that there is some work on the, I think, if I recall, there's some work on the capital improvement plan for the ESC?
Oh, no, this is not the ESC. This is the SS, Support Services Center. This is our facilities and support warehouse area.
Okay, all right, I roll back. Sorry, I'm thinking ESC in my head. All right.
We're on 8th Street, so, you know, it will be constructed in the back of the building, so no one will be able to see it from the front. It'll be under an overhang, so it'll be very well secluded. And actually, it's really beneficial here because we're more centrally located in the district than the high school is. So it would really help School Nutrition Services with delivery of food and also getting deliveries. Because we have a, you know, we have a loading dock here. We have all the facilities at the high school. They don't have a loading dock. So, you know, it'll be a benefit for School Nutrition Services to have that walk-in box here.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. That was my mistake. In my head, I'm at the ESC thinking what's going on. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Right here, the cabinet was getting excited. They'd have somewhere to store their frozen lunch, but maybe next time. Any other questions? Mr. Scrocky?
Thank you, Mr. Casa. I just would like to let the committee know a couple of quick things. First off, this refrigeration unit, freezer unit, I should say, as well as the architectural fees will be paid 100% by School Nutrition Services out of the enterprise fund. So there'll be no impact to the general fund. And secondly, there are opportunities with additional walk-in freezer space that the School Nutrition Services Program could actually take on additional commodities. And these are food that are provided by the US government free of charge. And we've had situations in the past where extra food has been made available, but we just didn't have the capacity to take on some of that food. So this will give us an opportunity, especially if there's like an additional surplus in one particular type of food, that we could have an opportunity to take on additional free food if we have that extra storage capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. And that's a really good point. I believe it was late August, early September, some board members, we went out to Pendale to visit School Nutrition Services. They actually had from the regional nonprofit food supplier for the whole Philadelphia region, southeastern Pennsylvania, one of their executives came up, and I believe it was in this meeting at some point. I recall them saying that North Penn, when they looked at the numbers, you know, it distributes because of our size, just far beyond what other school districts are able to do. But also, in that same conversation and with Director Frolic, you know, learning that how much we've also had to turn down because of those opportunities. So that, this capacity is a significant step forward to commend the administration for the strategic planning. This is something that was recognized a couple of years ago. I know we were hearing about it. And for the community to also understand and the committee, let's also recall that there's a new box truck that's either already in service or on its way. I believe that was paid for with grant funds. Right, Mr. Scrocky? I see you nodding. But this is, you know, we're actually building out School Nutrition Services to better meet the needs of the school district. So this seems like a well worthwhile project to keep us moving forward. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have to vote on this design contract moving forward as well, right, Mr. Schneider? Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Raise your hand or speak now. Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand or say aye. Motion unanimously approves. So we'll move the design contract for School Nutrition Services exterior walk-in freezer to action meeting for full board consideration. Thank you, Mr. Schneider, and the rest of the team. On to informational items.
Yes, we have an update for Crawford Stadium and NAP Elementary School. Mr. Slaughter?
Thank you again, everyone, and appreciate you inviting me to do the monthly update. I hope everyone had a good holiday weekend. Our update for the NAP and Crawford projects. Mr. Linsky, next slide, please, for November. So some notable things that happened at the NAP Elementary School. We completed the mechanical area concrete pad back by the drop-off. We have completed the boiler room work with regard to mechanical and plumbing issues. We continue to install the piping in corridors for upcoming and now present phase four. The CMU and glaze block at the serving area kitchen has been completed. Clear story exterior sheathing has been completed in the cafeteria and LGI area. The quarry and ceramic tile is wrapping up today and tomorrow. We installed the carpet in the media center, completed the installation of the bathrooms in phases 5A and 5 and 6. These are the gang bathrooms. The LGI cafeteria mechanical finishes, sound clouds, and diffusers have been completed. We final cleaned and turned over phase 5A and 5B this month, and they're currently occupied. We removed some temporary columns in the kitchen. Painted area 3B, which is the kitchen cafeteria and LGI areas. We completed the windows and glazing in 3A and 3B. There are a couple pieces of glass that still need to be installed. I think that count is probably three out of maybe 90 pieces of glass. We completed the interior vestibule storefront on November 2nd and 4th. We turned over the faculty dining area, completed the abatement in phase 4A. Ongoing demolition in 4A should be wrapping up this week. We began to receive and install the kitchen equipment partially in the kitchen area, and we installed the walk-in boxes. They have just been completed now with the exception of the tile flooring. The ceiling sound baffles and lighting in the LGI have been installed. And presently, all the new heat recovery units and rooftop units are now set. So everything new for HVAC that is on the roof is set and in place. Crawford Stadium, we continue the growing seating and routine maintenance. We continue to receive closeout documentation. That's about 98% wrapped up. And I just received word from the township yesterday that they're going to perform the final CO inspection with regard to the site this week. So I expect that we will get the final CO sometime in the next two weeks with paperwork. Next slide, please. Activities planned for the upcoming period of December. Of course, we continue to review and anticipate, try to avoid any conflicts, late deliveries associated with phase three and phase four. Phase four is the last phase of the interior renovation work for this project. We continue to pursue delivery of any portion that we can, you know, for early starts and anything else we can do to accelerate it. We get weekly updates on all the kitchen equipment, which is running behind right now. And we continue to preempt and schedule the site work for next summer. Once school is dismissed, we will begin the final site work on the parking lot, installing the curbing, the new paving, and getting everything done out to Valley Brook Road. As far as construction goes at NAP Elementary School, we're going to complete the areas as equipment arrives for the media center, LGI in the kitchen. The media center, the library shelving is coming the first week of December. The LGI, the folding door is coming the first week of December as well. As soon as that work is completed, we intend to turn those over to the school district. The kitchen equipment continues to dribble in. Unfortunately, there's a couple items that are running behind schedule. Therefore, that is behind where we were supposed to be. We completed demolition, complete the demolition in phase 4A. I apologize. We continue the underground saw cutting and new pipe installation below grade in phase four for those classrooms. We've set the door frames in 4A. That started today, actually. And CMU installation 4A has started, but will continue in the next two weeks. We are looking to complete the brickwork at the exterior phase 3B in the rear of the building for exterior access and receiving areas for the kitchen and maintenance area. We've completed the flurrazo in the LGI area, and we'll complete the cafeteria this weekend. We've completed the cafeteria bathrooms. We're installing the large folding partition, like I said, next week. We'll, the sound baffles have been completed, but we still need to install the vinyl graphics on the soffits at the cafeteria. I don't have a date for that installation right now. Duct and piping roughens in phase 4A should be completed. The windows and exterior doors in 4A should be completed next month. And we continue to receive and install kitchen equipment as it arrives. We're turning over portions of phase 3B as available. We anticipate turning over the media center in the next two weeks, as well as the LGI following that and the cafeteria shortly after that. The kitchen is the one that's lagging behind right now currently because of the equipment delays. We have temporary heating in place for the construction areas. As soon as we can do a minor clean down in those areas, we will start the permanent heating and air conditioning in those areas. Then we continue to clean up the exterior prior to snowfall, which it did start flaring today, so it's coming. I hate to be the bearer of bad news. Next slide, please. Activities planned for the next period, planning and design for Crawford Stadium. Of course, I continue to pursue the final certificate of occupancy. I continue to pursue the final certificate of occupancy. I'm hoping to see that next month without any kind of issue. Construction, we continue our turf maintenance program. The contractor is obliged to complete that until early next year. So we'll continue on that program as well. Next slide, please, Mr. Linsky. So the NAP ES schedule update, slightly good news, more not so great news on as far as the kitchen goes. The recovery schedule that we received from the general contractor was declined. We sent that back with comments, and that was due to the fact that the finish date was pushed out. This involves the late delivery of items, including the kitchen combi ovens, the water filtration systems, the stainless steel counters, the food slicer, library shelving, the circulation desk, some of the exterior panels and roll-up doors, and the gutter and downspouts. We're getting weekly updates on all these items. It's discussed not only at the weekly superintendents meetings, it's discussed at a Friday update meeting, and at every other week at the regular project meeting. Some late item critical path. Of course, I've expressed this for the last couple of months, the ICS concerns over the Three B completion. We originally scheduled to turn that area over on November 19th. There's still a lot of base contract work that is not complete. These items, this item is not impacted by any late deliveries in equipment, but it was impacted by the late steel setup for Phases Three A and Three B. So we're continuing to be on top of the general contractor and make sure that work gets caught up. We're tracking weekly updates, misanticipated delivery with little to no notice. One that we just got the other day was the folding partitions were supposed to be delivered. We didn't receive notice that they wouldn't be on time until the day they were scheduled for delivery. We just received a second notice for the roll-up doors. We were anticipating they would be in the second week of December. We're now being told that they will not be received until mid-January. So we're making temporary conditions set for that, so that we can open those without the rolling coil-up doors. And the date of Phase Three B has not been met, so we're working to turn that over as quickly as possible. Right now, we are looking at a Christmas break turnover for the kitchen area. So it looks like the media center will be in the next week and a half. The LGI will follow immediately with that, or immediately after that. And the cafeteria should follow a week after that. And then the kitchen, the week of Christmas, is what it's looking like right now, unfortunately. Some accelerated items. Of course, we turned over five several weeks early. Phase Four A has started probably about two and a half months ahead of schedule. So overall, the interior building renovation completion still looks to finish ahead of schedule overall. We're looking to turn over the last phase of the interior construction on the first week of May. So all the classrooms will be renovated, turned over to school for use. And the exterior paving and parking still needs to be completed. We cannot start that until, of course, the teachers and students are out for the year. So there's plenty of time in the summer of 2022 to complete all that work, remove the modulars, finish the bus loop, and repave the paving area in the front of the school. Next slide, please, Mr. Linsky. So some newly identified critical areas we submitted for consideration today. Change order 11 to the general contractor. There was a change order request, just to advise you of. Originally, Phase Four had concealed supplying ceiling system that was existing to remain. And in review with all the trades, it would have hampered their ability to attach hangers and ductwork in those areas. So we are going to utilize one of the unit costs that was associated for labor hours for the demolition of that. For the plumbing contract, the mechanical contract, we submitted plumbing change order number four to rework that roof drain, and mechanical contract number three for temporary heat lines. One pending change order request, the ICS and the owner has authorized MICO under the mechanical contract to install low-point drains in the chill water lines into the building. This was not part of the original contract. There were heat trace lines, and the water was supposed to stay in these lines over the winter. We expressed concerns over that design, especially in the fact if there was ever a heat tape failure, that could freeze and fracture the piping. So this will allow the school district to drain and/or add glycol additive to the outdoor sections of piping. That glycol would be reused year after year. So that would not be a huge cost to the school district, or we could just drain it down and leave air in the line if that was requested. Some more change order requests that are going to be forthcoming is during demolition of the walls, we found in Phase Four, we found that there was asbestos floor tile under the walls. This will have to have the abatement contractor come back and remove this floor tile. There is unit cost in their contract for that, and those costs will be applied to that change order. There's still the outstanding site curbing issue that which we will resolve next summer. And the late equipment delivery, supply chain issues continue to impact this project. We just got a notice the other day that painting, paint, which has always been readily available, is now 60 to 90 days out on certain kinds of paint, typically that are used in a project. So we're taking that into account. One other item that we did is glaze block for the base in Phase Four we released in March of 2021 with a nine-monthly, or a six-monthly time, I apologize. That was released in March. We just received notice that it won't be available until February. So we're, we're making alternative plans for that as well. So this, these are some of the supply chain issues that we're dealing with that, you know, we thought we had covered and have sprung up unbeknownst to us. Next slide, please, Mr. Linsky. Some safety warnings. Again, we have a lot more people on site, so the warnings are, you know, have ramped up a little bit at NAP. We have electrical safety issues, too, that were addressed immediately. One fall protection warning on an interior ladder in the serving line area, that was addressed immediately. Material storage issues, warning, that was addressed immediately. One slip, trip, and fall hazard, which was accumulated debris in a work area, that was addressed, pardon me. We had four mask warnings, two high-vis warnings for PPE, one ladder and scaffold warning, which was unsecured, that was addressed, and improper signage warning, which was addressed immediately. As a reminder to everyone, we have weekly site visits from the OSIP Independent Inspector, and these items are reported. Everyone is gathered together to report this as soon as it happens, and then things are usually addressed within one to two hours on all these items. Of course, no accidents to report anywhere, and no issues at Crawford Stadium. Next slide, Mr. Linsky. So here's some of the updated photos for NAP. As you can see, the new LGI in cafeteria have all the colored sound panels hung from the ceiling, as well as the ones that go on the soffit area. Right below those wall-mounted sound panels would be the vinyl graphics that we're waiting on. The picture to your right is the new LGI looking to the north, which would be towards the back of the school. Next slide, Mr. Linsky, please. This is in the cafeteria area, so that wood ceiling that you see in the vestibule as you walk in actually goes through into the cafeteria area, where it transitions into those sound panel areas. So the photo to the left is the cafeteria looking at the serving line, which you could see at the very bottom of the photo with that blue glaze block. The photo to the right is the new cafeteria looking south, which would be towards the front of the school. In the top right-hand corner of the photo, you can see the soffit and the transition to the wood ceiling. Next slide, please, Mr. Linsky. This is the new media center looking towards the LGI. So if you look through those windows, you can see into the LGI in the cafeteria area, and you can see the carpeting there. So what we're waiting on is the library shelving, which is due in next week. The photo to the right, you can see two gentlemen installing the roll-up shades. And this is the cafeteria and LGI area looking towards the south, which is the front of the building. Next slide, please, Mr. Linsky. The photo to the left is the cafeteria and LGI area, as they're doing floor prep for the Florazo installation. As of right now, more than half of that flooring is installed. The LGI is complete, and we're working on finishing the cafeteria this weekend. The photo to the right is the new student staff bathrooms in the cafeteria area. There are two independent unisex bathrooms in that area. Next slide, please. This photo to the left is the lighting controls in the cafeteria. As you can see, it's a pretty complex system. The photo to the right is the new walk-in cooler being installed, and the fan condenser ceiling mounted as well. Next slide, please. This is the new walk-in freezer that was installed, and you can see the partial kitchen equipment that has been delivered so far. What we're missing right now is some combi ovens, and some of the stainless steel countertops that feed the dishwasher, and the hot and cold well stations. So that's currently what's missing in that area. Next slide, please, Mr. Linsky. So you can see the kitchen serving line. That's actually a workstation table, I apologize. And in the background, you can see the kitchen hood. That ceiling has now been installed, and the work above the ceiling has been completed. To the right, you see two of the reach-in refrigerator and heating cabinets for the kitchen. Next slide, please, Mr. Linsky. The photo to the left is the installation of the media center flooring. The carpet tile is being installed currently. The photo to the right is the Phase Four flooring abatement. We had to abate some tile in that area, so that is showing that work progress. The next phase, please. Yeah, next, sorry, next slide, please. This is Phase Four, that supplying ceiling that we talked about, that we were going to try to leave in place. So that's going to be taken down as part of a unit cost. And then the photo to the right is the Phase Four hallway, which that tile and mastic had to be abated as well. Next slide, please. This is showing the cafeteria and LGI glazing being installed. Those windows were installed for a while. As you might have recognized, we had plywood panels in there until the glass could be received. Glazing is another impacted item that seems to be on every job site. So the one on the left is the LGI south elevation facing the front of the school, and the one on the right is the exterior north elevation facing the back of the school. So as you could see, that cafeteria and LGI now has windows on all four sides, letting in a lot of natural light. It's a very nice look in there. So if you haven't been there in a while, I suggest you stop in and take a peek. The last slide is the new receiving and maintenance area. You can see the brickwork is up to where it's supposed to be. Then we get the metal panels at the top of that. The doors have since been installed, and the scaffolding is on the process of being taken down. The photo to the right is the new HRU and RTU installation. So as I had stated earlier, we flew the last six units. So everything that is new is up on the roof in place, has been wired, and we're finishing up some of the dark work now. We're ready to start the media center cafeteria and kitchen units, and the two Phase Four units should be ready to start very shortly. As soon as the dust and debris stops, we will fire up those units. That is my presentation. Are there any questions on what has been presented?
Ms. Wesley?
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter. One question on Crawford and three questions on NAP. One question on Crawford is regarding the training or manuals that the maintenance staff need at this point. Is that completed?
So digitally, we have everything manual-wise and closeout-wise. I am picking up some paper copies. So everyone is required to submit digitally and a paper copy. So the paper copies from the GC, which is the bulk of it, I'm actually meeting them tomorrow morning to pick those up. Everything digitally is available on Procore. We will be providing that digitally on a hard drive to the school district as soon as everything is wrapped up. The ASBILTS are live on Procore, so that will be turned over as well. We did perform electrical training, and HVAC training, and some technology training at the Crawford Stadium. So any outstanding items, we will wrap up in the next couple of weeks.
Awesome. Thanks. To NAP, and maybe this is also Crawford. You talked about the heat tracing, that externally it was replaced with glycol, or you can, you know, put air in. So is there a heat tracing that you're looking at that's inside right now that you have to pay attention to because of winterizing and delays in the schedule, or?
No, the reason for that, those drains that we put in was at NAP only. So everything at Crawford is heated internally to the building. Everything that is exterior to the buildings at NAP is below grade. So nothing needs to be drained or winterized there. There is, for the water fountains that are on the exterior, they are supposed to be frostproof, but we did put drains in there. So all the buildings have the ability to be drained at Crawford if the school district prefers to do that. But they were designed to not be drained.
Okay.
At NAP, the chiller, the chill water loop is just plain water. And so the winterization that was in the original design was heat trace. So when the pipes leave the boiler room and go out to the chiller barrel, heat trace would keep that warm should the temperature go below 40 degrees. Our concern was that over time, heat tracing can fail, or a breaker could trip, or something like that. So we wanted to make sure the district had the ability to drain that down if they would prefer, or drain it down and fill the system with glycol if they felt that would be a safer venue. So this, this is just providing options to the school district for one of three ways for them to make sure that freeze protection is in place for the chill water loop.
And my last question, and then a question and then a request, but last question on that, on this slide where you talk about the critical path items, particularly around the kitchen, the equipment. So how far in terms of dates, how many days out beyond the expected completion date are we now?
Right now, we are, we are 11 days past when substantial completion was supposed to be completed.
For the kitchen?
For the, for Phase Three B.
Okay. So, but then, I'm just thinking, it seemed, it seems not as bad as what's on the slide, because the equipment is expected the end of December?
So yeah, essentially, we feel that the kitchen could be turned over by Christmas break. So when students return in January 3rd, we expect to be up and running now. So listen, you know, in my business and my job is to make sure we don't go a day past when it's supposed to be turned over. So, you know, in my experience, you know, this is, this is not necessarily a failure, but this is not the way we expect the job to run. So I'm sorry to paint the gloom and doom, but I'm not happy with progress.
Well, I appreciate that, and your tolerance for that, no doubt. But again, I think that we all know that with the pandemic and supply chain issues and such, you know, fabrication issues, there were things that were completely unforeseen and out of your control. So.
There were. There was also some base contract work that really should have been completed that I'm more, I'm more upset about than the fact that, you know, pandemic and supply chain issues have control.
Okay. Thank you. And while the committee, and I'm speaking on behalf of the committee, would like to see about possibly doing a tour, I guess, Mr. Schneider of NAP, possibly the week of December 13th, if that could be arranged?
Absolutely. I can send an email out and find out everyone's schedule, and we'll accommodate everybody's schedule.
Appreciate you taking that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wesley. Ms. Ramich?
Actually, my question was also about the cafeteria and when that would be complete, when we could see students in that space. So I think you answered that. And just, I appreciate your feedback on where we stand with that, that portion of the renovation. Just because as a, as a NAP, a former NAP parent, and knowing the, the way that the cafeteria was structured in the old building, this was, this was, this is a critical and really important piece of the renovation. And that now finally, the school will have the space that it needs in that cafeteria, and that the School Nutrition Services team will have the kitchen and the ergonomics and the structure in place to have a better workflow to support the number of students that come through that facility. So based on our last tour and the photos that you shared today, incredible progress. It's really amazing. Um, it's really amazing to see how it's starting to come together. That's a part of the project that we had high hopes for, but it was hard to envision. Um, because it was so drastically different from what the current um cafeteria space was modeled after. So really looking forward to a next visit to be able to go and see that and really thrilled to know that students might be in there in that space using that facility after Christmas break or after the winter holiday.
Yes, we we've been coordinating with Ms. Prolic of the School Nutrition Services. She's planning that the week of return from winter break will be similar lunch um menu as what they're offering right now and not utilizing the kitchen, but working out of the kitchen and having the cafeteria being utilized by students. And she's planning that possibly the second week actually changing the menu to mirror the other elementary schools. So we've been working closely uh with School Nutrition Services to make sure that they're fully aware and abreast of the the schedule for moving.
Amazing logistical work. Thank you for that thorough update, Mr. Schneider. Any final uh questions or thoughts? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Slaughter as well and to the entire team. All right, Mr. Schneider, uh, onto the High School Master Plan update. Please.
Uh, yes, um, the High School Master Plan, uh, Mr. Linsky, can you bring up that schedule? So we have been working with the Schrader Group and we received the draft schedule for the master planning process. This is a bar chart schedule which indicates the anticipated meeting dates. We do have one meeting right now scheduled for this Thursday, it's called a visioning session. And also in the um documents is included the master plan proposal from uh Schrader Group that outlines each one of the meetings and the purposes of it. The the visioning session is basically to discuss with the administration people who will be in attendance, um, planning, moving forward with the overall thirty thousand foot view of what the high school would be like, uh, just a real overview and planning so that the the subsequent meetings would uh take place seamlessly and be very productive. Uh, we'll be talking about who should be attending which meetings um and things like that. So right now we have on Thursday, uh, December second, we have the visionary meeting. And then the next meeting, series of meetings would be uh either a physical or virtual tours of state-of-the-art high schools. And that is actually planned uh in January. That we have a two-week period from January third through the nineteenth. So nothing is written in stone specifically on specific dates. We just allocated um that period of time to try to get to know some state-of-the-art high schools and and look at them. And we will be providing, as requested, a monthly update on this progress with monthly updates of what the meeting schedules will be. You know, we will be uh also including who would be attending meetings and uh topics and possible agendas and things like that on a monthly basis, so we can keep the Facilities and Operations Committee and the Board fully informed of the uh the progress. Um, there is a tentative uh work session date of March eighth. Uh, I'm sorry, not March eighth, scroll down, there you go. Yes, board review on March eighth of some just overall concepts. So there is a planned uh meeting for the March eighth work session to have a discussion on the just review of some concepts. Uh, the final review with the board is planned to be May tenth. Now, we do have subsequent and uh parallel items going on like uh traffic plan, uh, traffic study, enrollment study, hazardous material studies. So we do have a lot of other ancillary things going on at the same time, which will be fed into the master planning process so that uh the master planning process can be complete and um and get to that May tenth date for decision-making.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. It's exciting to see this because it looks so similar to when we began the NAP project. And for this to dovetail, as we see the results of NAP being you know, that development in the inclusion of community stakeholders and staff and all the professionals necessary see NAP at the point that it is now, you know, turning towards completion. Knowing that we've got that institutional experience now uh to turn our attention on something as big as the high school, um, really adds a lot of confidence. So I'm happy to see the schedule. Uh, one item that I I might add to parallel activity, uh, it would be, we we're going to have the RFP hopefully approved for safe schools as well in the comprehensive study, which will certainly include a a portion of North Penn High School and and uh that activity. So we make sure that's dovetailed in there as well, uh, appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Um, Ms. Wesley?
Thanks, Mr. Cuss. Mr. Schneider, regarding the environmental study um that will happen for the high school asbestos and the others. So you know, during NAP, there were issues that are unforeseen regarding soil and again, asbestos was just found. Are any of those, I guess, lessons learned being incorporated into the scope of what we'll do at the high school? So we have a, you know, even a more robust type of assessment at this point in the project?
Well, at at this point, the hazardous materials are just for that, non-environmental issues, but hazardous material issues. Um, that's what they're going to be looking at. And from that study, they'll, they can make recommendations of moving forward with other um tests, for example, you know, should we do borings around our fuel tanks, that type of thing? Uh, to see if we have any contamination surrounding the fuel tanks. Not that that would be a hundred percent guaranteed if if um we find none, that we wouldn't run into something during demolition, but we we will take that information from criteria and during that hazardous um material study. And uh they'll make recommendations for us to move forward with other studies, uh, moving, you know, environmentally.
And again, I I think from um, from a community perspective, from a board perspective, that the environmental piece, obviously, there's lots of other important pieces, but as much as we want to look to um keep these costs in the design phase reasonable, I personally think that the environmental piece should be robust, should be detailed so that we have a much more clear vision of what we're going, what we will encounter. So I'm more of a fan of drilling down, so to speak, um, in this particular phase because when we put the RFP out for the, for this project, the contractor, you know, the subcontractors, it, I think it's going to be really important for something this big to get our hand, you know, hands around it. And I know I'm speaking to the choir and I want a soapbox, but I I just put it out there regarding the environmental is is very, very important going forward. Thanks.
Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Wesley, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Um, so I have two questions. Can you, um, Mr. Scopier, remind me again, where in the process would we be doing the Act Thirty-four meeting where the community gets to have input? Um, I know it's a lot further down the road, right, but I can't remember.
Further down, yeah, a lot further down the road. I mean, that's after a lot of the design work and cost estimates are in hand, so we anticipate that probably still twenty twenty-three sometime.
Okay, and then um I remember we had that um, was that permitting process for the stadium project with the permeable surfaces or whatever? Do we have to go through that again for this project or is that?
Yes, we we will have to go through land development for this project. And part of the land development would be the um requesting a zoning change um to the site, which would help us with impervious surface and also to condense the parcels into one parcel, for example, taking the radio station parcel and bringing it into the high school parcel, which would help us with impervious surface also. So we do have to go through that whole process of land development. Um, and depending upon what that result is of the zoning change and what the design concepts are, would be, would determine what types of variances that may be needed or waivers. But you know, we we try to move in the direction where there are none, so that it makes it uh simplistic and quick.
Because that process takes a while as well, if I recall correctly.
Yes, yeah, that that can take a year. Um, you know, once, once we get um into the township, it could take, you know, nine months to a year to get through that.
Thank you.
Eric.
Yeah, is there a list of those uh state-of-the-art high schools that are on the list for visits?
Another, currently there are not, and that's one of the things that the Schrader Group will be providing. And uh so once we get that list, we can make it, make that list public um and discuss those.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, Eric?
Um, one more with with what Eric said. Um, would students actually participate in this, Mr. Schneider? I mean, are all stakeholders going to be part of these tours?
Yes, um, students will be participating, um, especially in the the workshop um section of it, uh, where we're actually talking about what the building, how the building is, uh, how the building will be laid out. Uh, definitely in in through the whole process. And that's one of the the good things that Schrader Group does very, very well is engage um stakeholders through the whole process. They'll make recommendations of what stakeholders would be best um for each of the processes. I've been through this with Schrader Group uh numerous times in the past, uh, not here at North Penn, but other school districts. And uh they they do a great job involving all stakeholders.
And and so students that would go, we would include students that require ADA compliance issues and things such as that, right, from the beginning?
We we would um engage students from every walk of life, let's say. Um, you know, I know that the ENAC Club is very interested in um becoming involved, for sure. They they voiced many opinions uh with the facilities and operations, so we will be engaging all stakeholders of the building.
Great, great.
That that's a great point too, uh, Ms. Wesley, because I I know that Vice President Fusco has mentioned with the redevelopment of the Special Education Alliance or the Parents Group. But we're going to have these, these groups as well, um, besides individuals, who will be able to inform this process going forward. It's very exciting. Madam President, do you have a question?
I do. It's not about um the high school though, per se, so are, is there anybody else that has a question about the high school or?
I just want to comment, um. Certainly, we're very excited about uh this and the timeline that we've laid out uh this evening. But we also are cognizant of the fact that we do really want to have significant stakeholder involvement. And we have to recognize that we are not yet fully through the pandemic. We do have individuals that are feeling, you know, a bit weary from, um, you know, ramifications of working through this pandemic. Uh, and rather than, you know, rush through a process that doesn't involve all of those stakeholders, we just have to be cognizant of the fact that we're laying out a timeline tonight, but that timeline is subject to some adjustment, depending how these next few months go. Um, so we just want to, you know, caution uh the community as they're tuning into this board committee meeting um that, you know, we are well aware of that. And when I say the community, I mean our full educational community, our teachers, our staff um and our parents and and students.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich, very much for that perspective, important context. Uh, Madam President and then Mr. Scrock.
Uh, yeah, I just, I wanted to know, is there an update on the um softball dugouts? That anyone can give?
Currently, yes, um, currently the softball dugouts, the foundations and slabs are poured. And the, the contractor who's uh doing the masonry work, he informed us when we had our meeting about a month ago, that the block, the donated block will not be arriving uh very quickly. So he's waiting for the donated block at this point. Once the block arrives, depending upon weather, he'll lay the block up and then have the carpenter come in and um perform the roof work. The, he was really pushing to get the foundations and slab in because obviously it's dry right now and doing that in the spring could have really torn up the the area. So he's, he's pleased that that work got completed.
Okay, so that the the, like what you're saying is the part that needed to be done now has been, okay, great.
It is completed, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Scrocky.
Just like to mention that we discussed a couple of parallel activities tonight. We talked about the traffic study and some of the environmental um studies that need to be done. Mr. Schneider did mention the enrollment study. We just wanted to let this committee know that that will be on the agenda for the Finance Committee meeting next Wednesday. We do have a proposal for the enrollment study, so we'll be asking the full board then later in December to approve that study. It's with the Montgomery County Planning Commission. They had done a previous study for North Penn about four or five years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. A lot coming together in twenty twenty-two. All right, any other questions or comments from the committee? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Schneider, um, for for that synopsis, especially something as complex. Um, it it must be coordinated. Appreciate what you and the staff are doing. There are no other items then, right, Mr. Schneider?
Correct, there are all the items uh on the agenda, Mr. Casa.
So move us on then to public comments. Mr. Gilmer, do I read the disclaimer?
Yes, we've got several in the audience tonight.
Wonderful. Individuals attending this meeting virtually and intending to speak to the committee should be aware that they are being recorded. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement is essential that those planning to address the committee raise their hand electronically and state their name and township. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to matters being discussed at tonight's meeting or matters that may come before the Facilities and Operations Committee in the future. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the committee, the chairperson may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. This is Board Policy Number Nine Zero Three. Go ahead, Mr. Gilmer.
Already up first is uh Mr. Lanier. Jason, I have uh unmuted your microphones. You're ready to begin. Go ahead and state your name and your borough township. Begin your comments, please.
Uh, Jason Lanier, Lansdale Borough. Hey, I want to tell you, um, you know, I've been listening to these, these meetings for for some time and have listened to many of these, these uh building facility updates. And I gotta, I have to compliment Ms. Wesley. She's really tuned in and 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 uh and is really engaged in all of what's going on. I've I've heard a lot of great questions from her. It it and asking questions, you know, I I I try to pay pretty tight attention. She's, she's ahead of me on a lot of these questions, so I got to give her a lot of compliments. And I was wondering, going forward, is she, is she going to be taking over this, this uh, the, this committee? Um, I mean, at the end of the last meeting, uh, Mr. Casa said that he was running against Todd Stevens. I imagine that happens in twenty twenty-two. And I would nominate, if I had a voice in, to to nominate uh Ms. Wesley for taking over this committee. Uh, so compliments to her, it, you know, again, always to like to save the pennies where you can in terms of making sure our costs aren't out of control, so I would definitely nominate her for uh, uh, taking over this committee. Thank you very much.
Now, I'll take this opportunity before any more time passes uh to clarify, Mr. Lanier, sometimes you tend to mishear what's been stated. And in no way did I mention that I'm running for any other office. What I mentioned last time was the bipartisan work with Representative Todd Stevens to work on common sense gun safety measures in Harrisburg that would help better protect our school community. So um just want to make that abundantly clear. But uh, I agree with you that uh Ms. Wesley is an invaluable member of this committee and we're very proud to have her be a part of this process moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Gilmer and Mr. Lanier.
And I just want to add that I think it's so important that we do have school um board officials who have backgrounds and insights that they can bring and complement. And Ms. Ms. Wesley's background in engineering and building management projects um was sought after, um, and wanting to make sure that we had that capacity on the board knowing the the level of projects and work that needed to be done within the district, so that there was that focus and that attention to that. Um, and someone who could then work in partnership with the incredible Facilities and Operations team within the district so that they felt that they had a voice and a partner um within that. So thank you for recognizing that, Mr. Lanier. We appreciate it.
If there are any other comments, you would raise your hand at this point. Seeing none, that'll conclude public comment for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier, for um always engaging with the board, um, it, uh, during many, many months, so we appreciate that. Let's go to a summary of items recommended for action. Uh, let's go to a summary of items recommended for action meeting, please, Mr. Schneider.
Yes, Mr. Casa, for uh the action meeting on December eighteenth, we have three change orders for NAP Elementary School. We have two contracts for hazardous material survey at the high school and the uh high school bus garage. We have a permission to advertise for a traffic study. And we have a contract to uh design the SSC uh exterior walk-in freezer.
SSC, right, Mr. Schneider?
Yes, correct.
Uh, that matches my list here. Uh, any other comments uh from the committee uh regarding those items? Seeing none, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Schneider, our next Facilities and Operations Committee meeting will be Monday, January thirty-first. I can't believe I'm saying that far ahead, uh, but it must not be that far ahead. January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. Virtually. Once again, we'll go back to Mondays then. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.